Welcome home.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
There's always a day.
The guy gave me Chris.
Not today.
Planning, five oh three, this call is meeting to order. Um, we're putting the local team.
And Chairperson Amy Deport.
Present.
Vice Chair Lady Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Thomas Pham. Assistant. Commissioner Kamra Robertson.
Present.
Commissioner Chris Vaney.
Present.
Commissioner Carson Bledsoe. Assistant. And Commissioner John, or Josh Urban. Fifty thousand dollars.
I'll be standing. Morning. Um, so. Speaking of having a forum, because this is a good segue, I'm going to make just a brief, uh, P and T Chairperson announcement if I may. For those of you who don't know, we had our regularly scheduled meeting last month, we did not have a forum. There were not enough people to have meetings, which was unfortunate because there were many people who had, um, taken time out of their day to, to come be a part of this. And we couldn't do anything because there weren't enough people to, to even, to even start. So, so you had zero meeting and, and we all sat around a little together for about one year, thirty minutes, and then everyone went home. Um, then we tried to call a special meeting to, to get some work done, because there's stuff that needs to be done. And we again didn't have enough people to accomplish that. So everything got pushed from that meeting to this meeting. Um, so I, I pinged, uh, Chris and, and he gave me the info. This was somewhere in the back of my brain, but, but it was helpful for me to refresh kind of the law of, of how this works. I'm going to take just a second and, and read this one section, section thirty dot three eight. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission may be removed from office at any time by simple majority vote of the full city council, here upon its own motion or upon recommendation of the commission. Okay, so it's up to city council. We, we serve at the, at the behest of the citizens and, and at city council. I can't imagine city council being like, let's take this guy out because we don't like him, but whatever, they, they have that power. Furthermore, failure to attend three consecutive scheduled meetings shall be deemed as neglect and cause for removal from office unless such actions were due to unusual circumstances beyond members' control, such as blah, 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 or the commissioner council approved the actions as excused. Uh, a vote to remove commissioner shall be placed according down the agenda. So, um, I, I knew there was something about that. Um, my intention isn't to be, uh, hardcore and, oh, well, you weren't here, wait, one more, you're out of here. But it is to, to bring to our awareness that we do have to take this seriously. It's not, it's, it's our time, but it's, but it's everybody's time. Um, and so we need to make every effort to make sure that these meetings happen as scheduled. Um, and, and we'll formalize it a little by saying, hey, man, if you're not going to be here, that needs to be, uh, passed on to Suzanne or Kevin. Um, so that, so that we know in advance that that's the situation.
I did receive that as some, um, you know, there were.
Great. And that's all I have to say about that.
Okay.
Um, next on the agenda are public comments. Um, we can do that. What I would suggest is if the public comments are related to, uh, the above ground pool, we'll offer just a second and we'll get our business out of the way and then we'll kind of rearrange our agenda items. Um, and talk about above ground pools first, and that way people can get on with their lives afterward, so.
Yes, sir.
Um, could we formally announce that the members are clearly?
Yeah, it's all right.
Just sort of on the background.
Yeah, what did you say to do to formally do what?
I don't know, five to five.
What did I mention?
So it'd be known, Charles, but it was five minutes late. Also, uh, according to the heat was not going to be here.
Perfect.
So we did receive. So that, that's great. That's perfect. As long as people, I, I don't really need to know in advance, as long as people are communicating with you all and if you all know the band, it's not that important. Uh, let's, so our first item then is approval of the regular meeting minutes from June seventh, which starts on page three in your packet, if you would care to review that. And I would be pleased to entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Please hold the three minutes.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from June seven.
What's that?
I guess.
You're taking it right. Chair Deport.
Uh, aye.
Vice Chair Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vaney.
Aye.
And Commissioner, uh, Bledsoe.
Okay, next we have a report from Council Liaisons.
Um, yes, I counsel actually have, there's two things related to what actions on the agenda today. Um, the first point is council is currently working on creating a citizen survey. And during that discussion, the mayor discussed the idea of sending the questions to a third party to create them more, in a more neutral fashion. I guess they're, they have contacts being regarded to associate all of it or something. Um, so I want to let you know that there is a citizen survey from council point of view in the work.
Do you know what the timeline on that is? Is that something that's going to happen soon or?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Do you have any?
It will be a while, yes.
Okay.
And then.
Okay. And then the other thing is the campaign was previously brought from council just as kind of a refresher for our eyes to kind of review it and look at it and see what, you know, to remind ourselves what's all in it. Um, and during that discussion was brought up the idea that, uh, P and T is actually passed with a two-year review. Um, now it was passed in twenty twenty-two, but it started well before that, so you decide when that two years is for you. But you do have time to obviously to take the time and decide what you wish to do and how you wish to go about reviewing it and what you would. I don't.
Thank you.
Want to answer my question?
If you may.
Answer the question.
Hey, Chris, do you know that if, since we have above ground pools going out as a questionnaire, is that also a part of the city council one?
It's still possibly in the work, but there were questions about that, so.
Okay, I just hate to duplicate work.
I agree.
Okay.
Um, maybe.
I may have misunderstood also, were, were you suggesting that, um, that, that this be combined as a one survey? Or were you simply letting us know that there was a third party who could, who could review our product and make it?
Possibly, but I'm just presenting what is going on with council, so P and T could decide, well, maybe we should just have one or maybe we don't. But we want to have it actually reviewed by the sociologist. So.
Okay.
Just for that, I'm just going to.
Okay.
You. If I can clarify, actually council does not want you to send out the questionnaire. They want your questionnaire to be combined with their questionnaire to be sent out. That is what council has decided. Is that a financial motivation or?
No.
If, if I may shed some light, and I know this is, I, uh, was charged by when you and the Whitehead administration, we did, it was decided that to do a comprehensive plan for the city of Wood Creek. Uh, we had a vision plan in twenty, twenty twenty vision plan, and then we had a vision plan in twenty thirty. The reason that we, it was a decision was made to go for a comprehensive plan is because it is a more robust document, and it is a document that can be used and in fact benefits the city when the city is applying for grants, when the city is applying for funding, uh, other sources or, uh, and also it is to be the, the guidance, provide guidance to use a plan on zoning on the land use. The, the plan is basically, the reason you have it in planning and zoning is because it's a land use plan. And it looks at our, how the land is being used now, what is the future. It also looks at our natural resources and the environment. It, it also looks at our fiscal, they have different components. The plan has goals and objectives and how to, and how to put together. And then you go through your goals and objectives, and there is an implementation schedule. The implementation schedule, which I developed the document, is not part of the narrative in the plan. If it's not in the city, um, and I, you know, and the committee that's in town also worked on that document. It is very much, I don't have to say, tell you because of your career in the air force, it is, it is a strategic plan. And you look at what the strategies and how the strategies are being met, achieved, or are lagging behind or exceeded.
True.
It's not, it, it's not, they evaluate, the plan was approved in October twenty twenty-four, so it's nine months old. It is.
Twenty-three.
Uh?
True.
Twenty twenty-two.
Two, two, okay.
So it is, it is due for review in October twenty-two, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
And that's what there is. Now, that is a mandatory review that it says the planning and zoning commission shall conduct a review. And in that review, there is an anticipation. And then it also says within the plan as well as the, as well as the code of ordinance says, that it is a inheritance that there be surveys, that the surveys that were conducted with the city will be updated in about four to six years. So there is a biennial review of the plan. The plan, uh, in about ten, if each plan should not, the plan should be updated. Every, whether it's vision or strategic or master plans, will be updated every ten years. The reason is that we have, unlike a strategic plan, where you, where you work for the public sector, where you look at it every other year, well, biannually, the reason you have these longer, uh, time frames is because the goals and objectives are pretty massive, like the land use and they're looking at the future. Nothing prevents you. Uh, I spoke to council about their proposal, which I understood at the time that council was going to, maybe I misunderstood, that was going to be reviewed by council, and I objected to that. I think council should be guided, should use the plan, is your, if you want to call it, you have, when you have your flight plan, you know where you're going, you know what you do, whether you're going to a wrong place. That's what council should do. Every decision they make should be compared against the plan. I don't mean minor decisions that prove your minutes or you pissed off, when the budget comes, the plan, Mr. Rule is an expert. I talk like one, but he is truly an expert. Uh, Mr. Rule, the, the, uh, the budget cycle will be very much, will be very much, uh, critical. The plan will be critical for them to compare the plan, where your resource is going to go and are those resources going to achieve the objective. Your wife's chair was one of the most valuable members of our committee. She put, uh, she provided a lot of input, a lot of her background, helped us write the narrative that we have. That check, that table, when you go back, you have to do this on a, look at every, uh, uh, objective. Look at your goal, what was your goal in land use, what was your goal? I would say without, from the top of my head, without going into great detail, that one of the areas where the objectives are moving well is the area of natural resources with all the changes that were going in progress.
I'm going to pause for just one second. I, I appreciate that. We're going to come, we're going to come back to that in just a second, but I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to maintain our focus for, for just a second. So, so right now what we're doing is, is we're receiving, uh, the reports from the liaison and city manager. And, and one second. And, and Chris has presented some information to us and we were kind of ping ponging back and forth to make sure we understood that information. So.
Yes.
Anything else related specifically to what our liaison has brought to us? Yes, okay. It's, it's, it's mostly one-way communication, it's mostly, hey, man, here's, here's what city council is doing. And then when we get to our agenda, start discussing these, we're going to be like, oh, but why isn't city council doing it? Right.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow the question.
Yeah, no, 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 I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, I, I appreciate you recognizing. I, I wanted to actually speak to that.
Okay.
Information that was relayed.
Okay.
And ask a question or two, maybe, um, manager, rule, they have an answer for it. But I was then needing, when there was a discussion at council.
Okay.
About the survey that was being worked on and approved, approved that you all were going to be doing at your own survey. And what I recall is a discussion that came up at council was about a survey, dual-length surveys that were going on between two council members and others, but it was about trails and walking trails and other issues that were not a matter of the above-ground pool. It didn't have anything to do with the, of the above-ground pool survey. So that's my recollection, and so I'm a little confused by that information.
Let me, let me, so just, this is my two cents on, on this. We, we do not, citizens do not want to receive surveys every week in the mail.
Right.
I, I'm fairly confident that that's a fair statement. Um, they will quickly lose their meaning if every week they make a new survey, they're like, oh, I don't want to be surveyed. So, so surveys should be by exception, or they should be tied to our comprehensive plan where, hey, man, it's time to do our review, and we are now sending out a survey to make sure that we're still on the path that we want to be as a city. And if we're not, give us your input and we will shift our path. Okay, we, we should not, in my opinion, be like, oh, well, let's, let's, let's do another survey. Let's ask them this time about sidewalks, like, this time about trees, and let's ask them about moving colors. Like, that, that will get old quickly. Um, the way it works for us, though, is, is an item was brought to, to this commission, it was above-ground pool. Um, it, it, it was implied that we were trying to expedite this, to, to get some pools in before the summer and, and hurry up and come up with an ordinance or a previous ordinance and let's go. And, and P and T said, hold on, timeout, hold up, we need some more information before we can do this. So in my mind, our survey that we're going to talk about still was kind of an exception, not, not a, yeah, let's just do another survey. So general high-level context of, of my perception of, of what we're doing. Um, okay. I'm sorry?
Mr. Rule?
Oh, yes. You're right, well, I was getting, I was getting back to that, so we'll finish with Chris. Now we've got city manager. I have nothing to report. City manager has none. Very good, thank you. Um, okay, so let's move on to our regular agenda items now. And, uh, if no one has any opposition to that, I would like to reorder them so that we can, uh, talk about the above-ground pool item first, and we'll get some public comments. Is there any problem with doing that? Is there any other issue with that? Okay, so then at this time, I would like to open the floor to public comments, and we have a few people who have requested this speed. Nikki Smith?
Yeah, and I know also that you have comments that were scheduled to email in from last week or, or last time around when we didn't have a forum, so you should have a bunch of those as well.
Please stand by, your call is important to us.
I know, I've got them and I.
We'll be with you just as soon, do you have them?
No, I don't have those with me, they're at home because.
Do you have them? Are there, are, are there other comments from last time? I, I do seem to vaguely remember.
I can grab the notebook, you know.
No, that's not it. It was specifically from Nikki.
Yeah, this was, the, the pages that you're looking at, so pages seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven were kind of some email exchanges of when we sent out the original, of people firing back, but. While she's doing that, would you like to go ahead?
Yeah. Uh, unless you wanted to mention your survey version first.
Um, I, I, all, all I will say about that right this second is, um, hit on me, I, I sent out, so we have a public, we have a draft survey that we're going to talk about. Um, I drafted it based on Commissioner Palm, he was the person who originally said, let's make it a survey. And, and we said, what do you want it to say? He wrote down a few bullets. Um, I, I took those bullets and, and turned it into a survey. And then after a little bit of public feedback, I, I replied to that. So, um, but I sent the incorrect one, it was my fault, I sent the incorrect one, I sent the old version to Suzanne. So what's in your package on page? Page five, um, is, is not correct. It, it should be this item here, which is titled, Top Draft Survey Regarding Above Ground Pools, twenty-three oh seven to five. So July sixth is the correct version. So, so this is our source document, when we talk about it, this, this is going to be our source document. This is what we're actually referencing. Yeah, that, that is the correct one.
This is the right one.
That's the correct, that's the one that we're. Yeah.
Okay, got it. Hey, will you give a copy of that?
Yes, you may. That will be here because of the lovely people.
Yeah.
Does everybody on the commission have this?
Yeah.
Over.
That's what I received anyway.
Um, can you make copies available for?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, Nikki, you want me to start by reading these or do you want me to start right on? Okay, so we have a couple of, uh, uh, sent in messages here. So the first one is from PSJ six four three five at deola.com. I don't remember that. There you go. Oh, here we go, Paula, Paula Schucraft, City of Wood Creek resident. Regarding, uh, above-ground pools, please be advised that I am very much in favor of allowing above-ground swimming pools in our city. Thank you for your attendance. Um, we also have a message from a person like a spouse, probably, Linda Schucraft, if you haven't been concerned. Um, please be advised that I am very much in favor of allowing above-ground swimming pools in our city. Thank you for your attention with that. And those are the only, uh, email comments that I have right now.
I think it has been one from Kate as well. Um, so, uh, with Andy's draft survey, um, contact me earlier, just for reminding you back to, and, um, I know that the bullet got a little bit. But I was concerned with is, um, I know that a lot of the reasons that people had, were concerned, expressed concerns about the veterans, those were either falling into category, either aesthetics or conservation generally. Um, and I thought that it'd be helpful for us to know more and to give people the option to have a little bit more of a nuanced feedback on that, uh, in the event that, um, you know, without some information, someone might just have these concerns and, um, say that they're against about our pools because they have one of these concerns that they felt were not addressed. And so I was thinking it'd be more helpful for everyone, if it was on this, we're doing the survey like this, to get a little bit more information from people that are responding. Are their concerns temporary? Are their concerns just aesthetics, you know, why are they, if they are concerned about above-ground pools, why? Uh, and will their, uh, opinions be impacted by whether or not water is trucked in? Or would their opinions be impacted by whether or not, you know, if we, if the drought finishes in here, or then if we find those above-ground pools? So I don't want the survey and the results of today to potentially take off, um, the idea of above-ground pools for the next twenty years if the drought ends next year. So, uh, I just added to Andy's survey a few questions, uh, at the end, like, what would your opinion be about allowing above-ground pools? If the ordinance requires water to be trucked in, fill the above-ground pools? So again, without specifying that that's been an option that's discussed, people won't know that that's been an option in the system. So whether or not it ends up being the final version of ordinance that this commitment proposes or not. I know it's something that the city council were, uh, pretty, pretty adamant about, including restructuring water. Um, and again, uh, what would your opinion be about allowing above-ground pools once the drought is over? Again, in case that opinion is, today I don't want it for this reason, but next summer, when everything's great, certainly. Um, and then for the city, consider having a moratorium on permitting approval for any project, and this is one issue that is in ground pools and housing development during drought. I don't know what the, the legal issue is that, that is possible, but I do know that, um, the development plays a much more significant role on water conservation. Um, that actually having, uh, an above-ground pool takes less water maintenance than too long, it's covering up. Um, so, um, and then since aesthetics was an issue that we brought up by several calls, shouldn't city be regulating aesthetics regarding the property and building materials in City of Wood Creek? Because of paint colors, other art sculptures, the new wooden pools, spendable playground equipment, you know, we're relying on aesthetics for people's concerns. But we don't live in a way that in many, uh, regards, sometimes in the ordinance, we seem to be pulled over to that mentality. Um, I'm not sure that that's completely reflective of where people are today. Um, anyway, I appreciate all the work that you guys are delivering with this, um, and, uh, and the time and the effort, I really appreciate it. I just would also like to make sure that we have a survey that we're maybe asking a little bit more information, getting a little more nuances, and knowing that, um, the majority of people that don't respond to that survey are probably fine either way and not that they're, you know, kind of love. So if we get, if we get ten people to answer the survey and six are against them, four are for, that doesn't mean that sixty percent of the community is against it. It means that the majority that didn't answer are fine either way. You just kind of remember that also when you're evaluating the balance, you're going to get the facts.
Thank you, and now Linda?
Good evening, um, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I'm going to tell you, I'm a junior president of the district, I'm a history of groundwater conservation district. I'm going to be very candid, and please don't hate me because I am the bearer of bad news. Um, my candidness is that this is a bad idea, the in-ground pools were a bad idea. You don't have the water, plain and simple. We have wells going dry all over the district. Aquifer Texas is over-pumping double their permit. They are getting a huge penalty, which they are trying not to pay because they have to pay it and can't charge you for it. Uh, so we're working with them to try to get them to fix the problem. They are not following the drought contingency plan, which means they're not ready to know. You are not supposed to be using water for anything other than basically to bathe and drink at this point in time. You do not have water for above-ground in-ground pools. The aquifer is the lowest it's ever been. It is going to stay that way, even if we get some good rain, it's going to take several months for it to come back up and for us to move out of the current drought restrictions that we are in. Historically, it has never risen back to where it was before. We are probably going to be in this drought for several more months, and then it's going to be at least another sixty days after we get adequate rain, uh, before we can come out of it, according to how we scientifically monitor the aquifer. We have already passed the pilot sustainability review. I understand that pools are great, fun, a lot of advantages, but I have to put the question, is that swimming pool more important than your shower or your cup of coffee? Because pretty soon those may be the choices we have to make. Trucking water in, I wonder where people think that water is coming from? It's coming from the very same aquifer, just somewhere else outside of Wood Creek. Those restrictions are in place for them as well. They're not going to be able to always supply trucked-in water. You also have the issue of repurposed cover. We need every foot of ground available in this area for raining to soak into the aquifer. Every bit, with all the construction that is going on, the new buildings and the roads, we are losing our recharge. That's another impairment to the aquifer being able to provide water. The aquifer, we have what's called a desired future condition, and this is a fifty-year plan, it's updated every five years. And we have to look at how far down can the aquifer go to be sustainable? Our drawdown is nineteen. We are currently at twenty-three feet. We have exceeded our desired future condition, and this is where we think the aquifer could be sustainable. We are beyond that. We are beyond that. So I just, you need to very, very seriously let people know and educate people before you do a survey. They need to be aware of what these pools are really going to mean. And here's the bottom line. Four or five years, what are your property values gonna be if you have no water? That swimming pool is great, but it's empty, it's cracking, or it's freezing up or whatever. Because you don't have water, and your value of your property is gonna go down because you don't have water, it's so limited or just not there. The well here is pretty good, but it has an impact on other wells, including the Wimberly water supply. So it's not just for you to use, it's for the whole area. And that has to be a consideration. So I would really, really like for you to wait, and spend some time, do some more research, get some more education, get your people educated, because Aqua Texas has not educated them. I've already had reports of people in Wood Creek watering their yards with sprinklers at four o'clock in the afternoon. And there's supposed to be no outdoor water starting off, none.
Not even dock plans?
None. Nope. I'll just give you a secret. I take three-minute showers, there's a bucket at my feet. I shower, that bucket's my mop bucket, and then it's my plant bucket. Now, I can do a little more because I'm on rainwater collection. But I'm still very, very, very conservative and have been. Because I don't know when it's gonna rain again. So I really think you need to postpone any kind of decisions, you need to educate your citizens about what this means, what the really downside to this is, potentially is, and I'm not saying maybe. Because these droughts are getting more, happening more often, the last really bad one was twenty-eleven. This one is worse because of population growth. It's lasting longer. Tourism, a lot of extra water used to tourism. But we've got a situation that we all got to work together.
Yeah, is stage, okay, the last letter that the city would be, we're stage four, that we were at stage four, and that was in January twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three. Is there a stage five?
No, no. And never in history have we gone into stage four. Never in history have we gone into stage four. Now, Wood Creek is in the Jacob's Well Management Zone. So you're actually in the stage, well, stage four, the thirty percent retainer. But that is different from the rest of the district that is in forty percent. That thirty percent is against the historical pumping that Aqua Texas has. So they have a baseline, but not only have they exceeded pumping past their baseline, they have pumped past their permit. Your average household use here in Wood Creek is ten thousand gallons a month per household. The usual average is three thousand feet, oh, three thousand gallons. Folks, you're gonna have to wake up and smell the coffee here. We we've got a problem, so I would really like to see, I'm gonna be working with the mayor and the city council. There's a group of us who have already started working with them and trying to get some education out there and understanding that if we don't start being more careful, we're not going to have anything. And that in-ground and above-ground pool, that's that's great, but it's gonna be useless if you have no water. Because what Aqua Texas is going to have to start doing, this is the law, that if we're in this retainer, and you put water in your pool, you get fined. You get fined. And they put a restrictor on your house that is only gonna allow you about three hundred and twenty-five gallons a day. We're not gonna like that, and I don't like being told what to do, but rules and laws are the best thing to go to the people. And this is what the groundwater district is going to be forcing Aqua Texas to do, because of the abuse and neglect of their, of them doing their job and actually protecting them and doing what's best for them. So I'm happy to answer any questions. We meet once a month, we're meeting at the Wizard Academy Thursday, tomorrow night. Next month, we will be meeting the first Thursday here in Wimberly, who are always open. I'm happy to come and give any programs, answer any questions at any time. As I said, there'll be meeting with county commissioner and some other mayors and everything, because it's not just a Wood Creek problem. This is a Wimberly Valley problem, it is a Western Hays problem, it is a Hays County problem. It's Barton's Blanco County problem. Our primary recharge comes from actually around Blanco. And they've got wells going dry too, because they've done no damage to it. So I'm happy to answer any questions, I'd like to say I'm sorry to be so negative and so dire. The truth sometimes hurts, but we were the point that if I'm not honest with you, I'm not doing my job. And I really, really, really cannot tell you how bad of an idea pools of any kind are in your country right now, and probably in the future.
I have a question.
No question.
I'm relatively new to the area, and and your organization is named Hays County Groundwater.
Hays Trinity.
Hays Trinity.
Yeah.
So that means that our only source of water is groundwater.
That's cool.
And we're not connected, I know, like San Antonio is trying to go after Canyon Lake Water, we're not connected to anybody else.
In North, in Derby Springs area, there's the old L C R A pipeline from the Highlands. Austin Lake Water that is available up there, that line does not go down here, and they do not have water. Canyon Lake Water is soaking forth, but there's no pipeline, and then you're coming in from Canyon Lake. The water that was coming from the Coriza Wildcocks, what's happened now is those people have gotten all of their wells drained dry from selling somewhere else, you know, Robin Peter to pay Paul. Unfortunately, we can't say if you moved here, you have to bring the water with you. I I was just somehow, I don't know, when I moved here in two thousand, I heard we've got water problems, and so I put in rainwater. So you believe. And I'm in better shape than most of you, probably. But again, that conservation is past. So it's it's, the predictions from down low are that it's gonna be a couple of months before we get out of heat and out of drought. And then we may have flooding, which is not going to help the aquifer. But it's gonna, these rains that we got were great for the grass and some of the trees and stuff, but none of that water got into the aquifer. We had one or two wells that came out maybe our foot in one area, in the northwest kind of area. New wells, let me just, I may submit a minute, educate them. All the wells here, and your city well is in the middle Trinity, that's where almost all the water is. And the Jacob's Well Management Zone, all new wells drilled in the management zone have to go to the lower Trinity. So it does not have a negative impact on the public supply wells, private wells, et cetera. That water gets, that part of the Trinity aquifer gets virtually no recharge. So when those people use up all that water, there will be no one. So I pose a question to developers and people in business and thinking they're gonna make some money. What are you gonna do when you have no water and put in, spend all this money? And in five years, ten years, you have no water. And these developers, if I bought property in one of these new developers, and and that developer knew that there's probably not gonna be water, but didn't tell me, I would be hauling him in court as fast as I could because my property would have no value without water. That's just the direction we're heading, if we don't start paying attention. Pools are considered a waste in this scenario.
Okay, thank you, Linda.
Linda. Linda, I'd like your information, you have a card or anything?
Yes.
We have the card right here, unless you have another?
I have it.
Oh, okay. I can get it from the matter.
Any other public comments that you know of? Okay, this concludes the public comment section, and we will officially open our regulator in the demo with the bullet previously known as number three, which is now, we've decided to take appropriate action on creating a citizen survey regarding above-ground pool to be mailed to Wood Creek residents. I will open this up by reminding that the whole point of the whole point of us doing this survey, and and it doesn't matter, we can make it whatever we want, okay? But but the objective at the beginning was simply to figure out, do we need to even spend our time doing this? Because it seemed like there was a vocal group of people that wanted pools at one meeting, and a vocal group of people that didn't want pools at the next meeting. And we as a body, that let's send out a survey to get feedback. And if eighty percent of the respondents say, we don't want pools of any kind, death to pools, then let's not spend too much energy working on this, let's make a recommendation, and remember, we're just making a recommendation to city council that says, hey man, in our opinion, based on our surveys, we don't think this is a good idea. Right? So so I I appreciate Nikki saying, hey man, we're gonna send out a survey anyway, let's 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 get high fidelity information, we can totally do that. But but our opening objective was simply to find out, is this something that that A is, is, well, is this something that the people in the city want? That is, if it answers yes, great, then we're gonna move forward and 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 work on getting an ordinance drafted and incorporating all the feedback so that so that everything is what it's gonna be. And if not, then we're gonna be like, no, we, based on our feedback. So that's number one. Number two, Linda actually answered a question that I've had for a long time, so thank you. And and that is that police officer Kevin here enforces, enforces city ordinance. Or or maybe he doesn't, but but right now the but you are, we we only do city. Yeah, the the point is, he and and the city, and whatever the process is or is going to be, is is a city work. So there was some early discussion about, you know, trucking in water and and maybe people have to show their receipts and this and that, and and it very quickly was like, well, hold on a second, like this, I I know you guys don't see this, but 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 this answers the question. This isn't the city. This is Aqua Texas, is it Aqua Texas who's gonna come?
Yeah.
Yeah, so 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 this is, this is Aqua Texas enforcing the the drought, the drought ordinance, the the drought regulations, whatever, whatever it's called. So so when we see those cities, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm clearly having a stroke right now. When we see those signs around the city that say forty percent, you know, drought restrictions are enacted, that that doesn't mean that Kevin's gonna come by, if he sees you with a hose, I mean, he may be like, hey man, you might wanna know that, but 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 Kevin's not gonna shut off your water or or issue you a citation. Aqua Texas is, so so we don't, we we just wanna be careful, we we are not in the business of of making ordinances that cater to another jurisdiction, right? Like, we don't wanna, we don't wanna cross those streams. Yeah, so we 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 just wanna be mindful of that, that that when people can fill their pools isn't up to us, and it shouldn't be up to us. What's what's up to us in the city, when I say us, is can people have a pool or not? And and if they can, can they fill it or not, is is more related to, are we in a drought or are we not in a drought? And 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 what is, what is, what are our restrictions based on this? So, okay, that's all I wanted to say for some opening comments, so I will open it up, and we may just go. Again, this document here is our source document, this is what we're contemplating at this point. Did we print it off?
I think so, when they look at the screen for the last bit, they can see it.
Oh, okay.
Page six, just so people know, page six, it looks like this. Was, I believe Suzanne's reinterpretation of of my original survey that I put together, so.
Well, I wasn't there for that, it wasn't a reinterpretation, it was a reorganization.
A reorganization.
Yes.
Reorganization.
A reword.
Yeah, a reword. So just to get this party started, one of the, one of the thoughts I had for specifically doing it in this order is this, I I don't know how most people work, but but I I tackle the problems as they come up. I I do things as as I get to them. And so I didn't want, so I tried in this one to give people the information from, and then the very last thing I wanted to do is, now that you've got the information, give us a thumbs up, a thumb down, or I don't care. So when Suzanne reordered it, that order didn't speak to me, because me personally, I would read the top paragraph, and then I see, and my supporter don't care or hope, then I would probably go ahead and select one of those, and then maybe not even read the additional stuff, because it already accomplished my goal. That could just be me, but that that was thought process, but important is in this.
No, we've done, you know.
Yeah.
Okay. I know we've, we've looked at this several times, and we have organized it and reorganized it. And I think we've all talked about this drought and water issue problems, and you know, it's nice to have a pool, but it's not a necessity. So I don't know, you know, this, I think this is a good thing to go ahead and move forward with, to ask the citizenry about this. But, you know, knowing what I know about Aqua Texas, and they're in the middle of our neighborhood right now, tearing up the whole neighborhood, putting in new sewer lines that will hopefully bring us level-one effluent that can be used to water instead of pulling from the groundwater. You don't wanna fill a pool with level-one effluent either, so. Anyway, I'm just saying that, you know, we're, we're really going to have some issues. Seeing Jacob's Well, the picture of Jacob's Well this week, the hole in the ground that it is, I've never, ever, I've been coming to Wimberly for over fifty years and swam there for years before it had all the concrete around it and everything. I've never seen it that way, ever. It is devastating.
Let me, let me, let me keep it on our climate, though. That's your opinion, I I may agree with your opinion. Everybody is entitled to an opinion, some people have different opinions, so so, but we're not quite to that point yet, where it's time to express an opinion.
Okay.
What what I think we're trying to do right now is to, we've, we've, we've already decided, we want the people's feedback.
Yes.
Pools, yes, pools, no, or pools, I don't care. And 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 I think some of the feedback we get from from the audience is, let's, let's do that in as neutral a fashion as possible, right? We don't wanna send out a survey that says, if you wanna be one of those, be in favor of a pool, so it's to be you, but go ahead and mark, right? We we want a neutral unbiased, hey man, we just wanna know, we're working for you, we wanna know what your opinion is, do you want above-ground pools or not? Yes or no? Now, let's, let's give them a little information so that they can consider different aspects. But but let's do so in a way that that doesn't bias them, I I don't wanna impose my opinion on them, I would like some raw data back so that we as a body can make an informed decision, and once we have that, is is, it's when we're drafting or not drafting an ordinance, which is, which is when we need that. I think this is a horrible idea, I think.
Correct. I know, but I, basically, I was looking at what we have right here and what Nikki brought forward, and her questions are good questions. The only one that I am worried about is, should the city regulate aesthetics with regards to property and building materials? I think that's the only one I.
What is, let me, let me, I'm gonna clarify one thing, y'all will not be writing an ordinance.
Okay.
What you will be doing is that you will be giving recommendations to council. One, should there be above-ground pools, should there not be above-ground pools allowed? And then, based upon that, okay, that's the first one, should they, should they be allowed or should not be allowed? And then you can, then you can, and next thing is to do recommendations. What would you like to see, or what else would you like to recommend? And then that will go to council.
Okay.
And so it's not where. And so it's not where y'all are gonna sit down and and draft an ordinance to recommend it to council. All you're doing is saying a thumbs up, thumbs down, and here's some ideals or recommendations that we would like for you to consider.
But then that ordinance will come back, though.
No, it will not.
It will not?
It will not.
Okay, great.
All you do is the recommendation to council.
Okay. Um, my next question to you, Kevin, was about, uh, this, this came up previously. Um, it was pointed out that we are not an HOA, and that HOA has the legal authority to regulate aesthetics. Your cities do not, is that?
Of course.
Correct.
Yeah, you can't have, um, aesthetics both neighborhoods, well, based upon the law, of course, you can't have that. Uh, you know, it all comes down to.
Wait, say what you just said again.
The first one, aesthetics, property value, that's, that's an argument of, um, saying whether it increases or decreases, it depends on who you talk to and whether or not they love. Uh, you can't do form of design, building materials, uh, you can do a purchase cover, um.
So she can mention that, because I know that's the reason some people are concerned about pools, is that the perception that maybe they are, um, immune to the interior cover, but just saying that if they.
They're a hundred percent in purchase cover, that you have to do a calculation, correct? They are, they are in the in purchase cover calculation. Um, you know, the purchase cover and where are you gonna get your water? That's the, that's the, that's the two, that's the two points. That's where city, you, I would think that this committee would want to look at.
So I have just a topic of discussion. And so, the bundle of rights, when you purchase your property, includes right of ownership, which is if it's, if it's lawful, that you should be able to find pleasure and do what you wanna do on your, your home, your homestead. So I wanna find out if that's even legal to 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 say, okay, we're a city and you can't have above-ground pools. So I'd like to bring that before council, maybe, you know, get legal advice from the bundle of rights.
You can, you can say you cannot have above-ground pool.
You can.
Correct.
Okay.
That is legal to do.
Okay, and how is that? I mean, if you've got your bundle of rights when you own property.
I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not gonna, I mean, I, I just know from talking to the city attorney that you can do it, and that's how we have it in ordinance. Now, here's the thing with ordinances, somebody doesn't like it, they can sue the city.
Right.
I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't, nothing is, nothing is legal until those are the courses. And I don't know if there has been a court case that have gone through there. I know personally, the city has never been sued on that behalf.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm sure, anybody can sue the city for anything.
Right, okay, and then my o- my other, um, my other thought is that, you know, can we table this till after the drought, or we get into like phase one, or there be some kind of measurement as to when? We can, we can bring this up and discuss it again, because obviously, right now is not a good time.
One, one of your recommendations could be that, um, that no, and I've heard this before, no new above-ground or inw- ground pools, um, can be established in the city, would be until we're below or below thirty percent drought stage.
Okay, yes, sir.
And then that way, I mean, I I don't wanna do the poll or make recommendations for you, I'm just giving you examples. That would be, that would be one way to make a recommendation to council. You know, you could say, okay, you can have above-ground pools, but let's put a moratorium on all above-ground and in-ground, and then when we get under drought conditions, which is gonna be a long time.
Right.
You know, because, and I can't see, anyway, I'm gonna leave it at that, but that that would be one option.
Okay.
Or you could do that, yes, you could delay it.
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna do that, delay it till we're on a drought, or above ground, or, you know, ground.
Did you have something, Chris?
Well, was that being made as a motion?
I think we're just discussing. Yeah, did you have something?
It was more just addressing the first point, um, so the way the Texas code is written, and so Texas gives the city its authority. And the way it's written is, I'm gonna come to some rules, we have to follow the international swimming pools, the Vaca, but we can make a difference, but we make a difference not. But that's where that, we, you know, the city has stated, we don't allow above-ground pools, that's the additional requirement the city is allowed to make. We can also decide no. Because the state is written that, the particular code is written, if the city chooses to enforce regulations for some people, we must have this code. But that also gives the option that we don't have to.
Chris, you always have something inside, we'll throw it out there.
Yeah, I I can see the gears going.
Yeah, um, no, I I am just gonna kinda concur Tamra with, um, delaying until we're at a more reasonable, uh, awkward level. Um, yeah, and the other thinking was, you know, we've already kind of ticked off a couple of these, um, you know, with, with council doing their survey as well, uh, you know, you never know when that section is gonna take place. So, um, you know, I think that's kind of the, the question as well, is, we're getting back to what is the actual, like, are we trying to get this answer, yes, no, amen, or don't care? Um, you know, I think we would need to work through maybe some of the list as well, but, you know, you still have the power within the commission to send this survey if we just wanted to have that known, but, um, also does seem like, uh, a bit dry time to be added.
Um, let me, let me back us up just a little bit farther, one step farther, the way this, we, we didn't think of this idea, right? It's not like, hey, what do you guys wanna talk about, how about above-ground pools, yeah, let's do that, right? This, this, whether right or wrong, how it got to us, it it came to us from city council in the form of a draft ordinance. And our interpretation was, city council wants us to review this and expedite this process and give it the blessing so that they can, right, that's, that's how this started with us. Um, so our, our, it's kinda like, I I love Chris's analogy, his latter analogy of of you make a motion, and then amendment, and then an amendment, and then an amendment, and then you vote on the amendment, and then this amendment, and this amendment, and you get right down to the motion. I feel like you could use that same analogy, you know, we started this process with, hey, uh, city council wants P and Z to give their input on above-ground pools. That's here, um, then next, P and Z said, okay, yeah, well, we'll give you our opinions, but first, we wanna know from, from the citizens, if this is even something we wanna do. Um, and and so we, we kind of need to address, well, one other thing that I'll throw out was that there was, um, this, this, this may be a retake, but but there was kind of commentary early on, um, when it seemed like this process needed to be expedited about, well, how come P and Z hasn't taken this up? You know, how long are we gonna let P and Z go with this before we do something and make them address this? Right, and 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 the, do we have a city attorney now? Are we, okay.
Is there?
Roger, so, okay, and 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 Roger, I I asked him about it, he said something like, well, I mean, it probably won't really be an issue, but but like, if you kind of ignore, the city council sends you something and you ignore it like three months in a row, then, yeah, they could and you guys, and say, let's get somebody else to work on it, you know, or or something like that. So so my point is, we were, we were given an assignment to do, or or we've, we've created it, or or something, we're working on this now. Um, so I I feel like we need to do something with that. Um, the, the, the assignment was make recommendations on above-ground pools. We as a body said, okay, but first, we're gonna get the citizen feedback on that. Um, so now I feel like we need to, w- w- we can, we can postpone, we can say, okay, yeah, should we do this, let's get the feedback, well, let's just poke on everything until there's no drought. Okay, we can do that if we want, um, I I don't, I don't know.
Can that be on the survey now? That just learned to tell.
Well, but that's, so, but that's a little bit different, like.
That's different, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, so, right now, you know, in favor of pools or or not in favor of pools? And 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 the reason some of these bullets were on here is, hey, before you just circle one of these answers, you know, stop and think about, if any of these things are important to you, do you think it's gonna affect your property value? I I don't know, I I don't, I don't care, um, do you, do you think it's gonna impact water levels? I mean, it, it was just meant to kind of seed some thought so that, so that people would give a thoughtful response, as opposed to, I don't want pool. Or, no, I don't want pool, you know? Um, it it, but, but that's it, it wasn't meant to to need anyone in any direction or or anything like that, so. It it was just meant to try to get unbiased information back to us. So, um, we, we, we can, it is within our right to say, you know what, we're gonna just table this whole topic or postpone, probably postpone this whole topic. Um, but it was us, it was Commissioner Paul who said, I wanna send out a survey, and our tasking for tonight is, well, let's finish our survey and and send it out. So so I guess we can, we can overrule ourselves and say, you know the more we can do that, the more we don't even wanna do a survey. Um, but I don't, I don't know that that's the best idea.
Or theoretically, you can recommend back to city council that they do the survey or include their survey.
I think the survey is fine, it's just another piece of information for making, making decisions. So honestly, the hardest to handle is the, that's my experience.
I, yeah, I'd rather get the, the feedback with the survey, that's my two cents. Just send it out, it's additional information to give to council. And if we get the survey results back and, you know, they look like we need to really, you know, recommend to council a moratorium, you know, then let's do it.
So so then, with with that in mind, looking at this draft survey, um, is everybody happy with this? Would, would anyone like to make any changes to this? So, um, and this is, this is our product, you know, what, what do you think? Go ahead.
Um, I was just gonna add, Ken, if you could recap the, you you mentioned that there was some line items on here that we just do not be able to ask, so what was your use makes for the property dollar there?
Um.
Thanks, and inform anyone.
Well, bullet, bullet number two, so so what 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 I think I heard, which I I like the thing, it it sounded to me like Chris was saying, hey, man, let's take opinions of the stuff out of this altogether. Let's only talk about things that we as a city have some sort of regulation over, which is item number two, water usage. Three, portion of number three, staying, five, item number five, which is the previous cover, and then item number seven, priority of this versus other issue, we, that that gets back to our master plan, you know, hey, man, the the people spoke, and and they want this, and this, and this, and this, and this, and nowhere on there was their above-ground pool. So we can for sure talk about those things, because that's all part of what we as a city are already doing.
The first thing I would change is is in the, is the third paragraph that it has anticipated that permitting rules and regulations governing above-ground pools will be similar to those in place for in-ground pools.
That may or may not.
That's correct.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
What you're, what you're saying is that it needs to be changed, and I'm sure it's what you're saying.
Yes.
That sentence is not accurate.
What is not accurate about that?
The inspections are completely different.
There are a whole set of different inspections for in-ground pools versus.
But those inspections all, don't they all stem from that international swimming pool?
There's two different sections in the international code, one for above-ground pools and one for underground pools, that are just, there's different regulations. And our, um, inspectors look at different things that for above-ground pools that they do not look for in in-ground pools.
But is it just inspections, because what that sentence is saying is that permitting.
Permitting, what's it different as well, because with the per- permitting, we don't have a permit yet. And so I really can't tell you the exact differences, but, um, I can tell you, you know, there there has been talk that a permit would be required on a yearly basis. Um, in-ground pool doesn't have one, um, per. Uh, for in-ground pools, you don't have to truck in outside of water, um, those are just two right there, so I mean, there's, there's differences.
But that, but that gets to, that gets to opinion, right? Our recommendation could be that, hey, we think the the permitting should be the same, we think the water usage should be the same, regardless. So it it, I guess the answer to that is it 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 kind of depends, so it is, it is possible that these rules will be the same, it's possible they'll be different, but.
Well, the permit, yes.
The inspections will always be different.
Those inspections and requirements will always be different.
Okay, I already have answers in, on paper from ATS saying that they are different.
Okay, they go by a whole different list of.
May.
So strike that third paragraph. Is that what you're saying?
I think it might be important to let people know when they're doing the survey, that there are some restrictions and things that above-ground pools would have to abide by.
So then, we can say, there will be rules and regulations and permitting governing above-ground pools, those are gonna be determined.
Well, no, they're determined.
So they have to.
Well, permitting.
So they have to vote for it to know what's in it? Yeah, I know what you're saying. You have to vote for it to know what's in it, because it will be different, but we can't tell you what they'll be different, but they will be different. We're not asking, like, we we don't have that availability yet, right? We we just need a general opinion on, yeah.
No, that's fine, not with the schools.
But didn't you say there's different, um, regulations and stuff for above-ground pools that are in place?
Correct.
For inspection.
In the, in the two thousand fifteen International Poolers Ball.
Can we just put that down?
Yeah. Can we just put the uh, above-ground pool notation there from the international swimming thing, and it's on our website, it's not?
No, it's not.
Oh, it's not?
No, you have to have a subscription for.
Oh, okay.
That and, yeah.
But it is here at City Hall, anybody can watch it.
Yes.
We do have a copy. And that, that's what's in our code of ordinances, is that it's available here at City Hall for anybody to.
Okay, so if if you change that paragraph to read that, uh, regulations and inspections and rules for above-ground pools, uh, are available to you at City Hall, uh, in the form of chapter seven, two thousand.
Because our inspections, uh, that does not come from the International Poolers Ball, that comes from the, um, ATS are contracted out inspector.
Okay. You make things so hard.
Well, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a simple.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, I'm trying to get something down so that it is basically stated there that, you know, there's a reference that you can look at or.
Yeah, we don't have a.
I can scan, put it online.
No, we.
No, I think that would go against, you have to have a.
See, chapter seven is for, uh, underground, storable residential swimming pools.
Chapter eight is the other one.
Chapter eight is.
Chapter eight is.
In-ground.
Yeah. Yeah.
Chapter eight is permanent in-ground residential pools, and you see, they have two different sections with different stuff. It was, if it was the same, they would just have one section.
Okay.
So that's why I'm saying that they're different, and then
How about?
A lot of this stuff is all the, all the same, general compliance, stuff.
May I ask a second question? Is the commission's goal with it to get an educated opinion from citizens or just an opinion? I, I'm, I'm being honest, because here's what I see as a citizen, when I look at this, it's kinda like saying, well, aesthetics don't matter to me, but the water does. The water doesn't, and I don't wanna junky pool up next door to me. So, I think somehow, to, your name's Nikki?
Yes.
To Nikki's point in her additional questions, they're a little more in-depth, and they're, they're giving knowledge and asking for you to reply to the knowledge being given. for you to reply to the knowledge being given. Does that make sense? And so what I see here is I think that somehow that if, if our goal is to really have an educated opinion, is to give a little more detail about these issues so that they can answer each issue.
If I may be, I'm, I'm very, I've, I've done a lot of surveys, including with the city three times on vision and with my job. There's too much here.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm a citizen. I'm, I've been on council and I understand this, but I am JDO, the citizen. And the, 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 the quote, priority of this issue relative to other issues identified in the city, city master plan. What's the city master plan, says Granny? One of the other issues, I think that it should be simplified. I think it's too much, too much information. It's not simplified. I also think that right of the homeowner to utilize their property in their best interest. I would say what, when I was here and there was a very emotional presentation and by, um, Nancy Antista, and I'm not confident that she was here, about she had ripped her landscape in her home on Two Little Road. She has converted the entire landscape to meet drought. So should Nancy Antista be entitled to destroy? That's her right to use her property. If we don't allow somebody to build a deck that is going to create impervious cover, we don't allow them to build a concrete patio because of the impervious cover. So, yes, we have the right, I have the right to enjoy my property, but I have, I have to maintain. So I think here, so honestly, this for citizens. And I know that we live in a community that is, we have a lot of very educated people, very invested people. Too much. My personal opinion.
You know, yeah, I think the analogy of the latter, we, we can use that. I think though it means to go in reverse, okay? So, so, so you have an issue, you have above-ground pools, okay? So if they come back and they say, um, yes, we want above-ground pools, you're gonna dismiss anything about water and say, okay, they're gonna have it because sixty percent says they wanna have it. Or, I mean, I think you have to under, you have to do, do, okay, are we gonna have them? Yes or no? And then if they come back and say, yes, we want them, are you gonna let them have them? And water won't become an issue. Because if, if you send out the survey and it comes back sixty percent for, um, yes, I want above-ground pools, it's my understanding that y'all will take that information and say, okay, the citizens have spoken, then we're going to allow above-ground pools.
No, that's not correct. So what, the, the way this started was with, with a draft ordinance. And, and we had a public hearing. Should we, and that's where the comments started to come out. Well, wait, what about the water? Yeah, we should have it dropped in. Well, wait, what about permitting? What should we do with that? Like, we were starting to get into the weeds with all that. And that's why Commissioner Paul said, well, hold on a second. Let's not even spend our time thinking about that stuff if most of the city doesn't even want pools. So in, in, in our mind, the way, in my mind anyway, the way this is working out is we, we just need some information. If, if fifty percent of the people come back and say, yeah, we want above-ground pool, well, that doesn't mean that we're like, all right, go build one. That means like, okay, let's spend our time figuring out what's the smart way to have above-ground pools in the city. Where is the water? How is the permitting process gonna work? Like, that's when we get into the details to figure out what our recommendation to city council.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, Nick, but again, the survey, it is too complicated. But I would like to see a rating system. So you can put down each one of these issues and one to five or one to ten, whatever, rate of importance to you, what this issue is. And, and then, and, and just say, if you have questions, call the office, you know? Okay, I'm gonna get more information if you have no lead out here, which you really have no control over. And simplify it, but do a rating of, of what's important. And you might just ask a question or are you interested in having a pool? Yes or no?
So, so I, I find it helpful sometimes, sometime to go to extremes. So on, on one extreme, like, we're, we're just talking about sending out a survey. Look, sending out a survey. On one extreme, it's just a one-line question. Are you in favor of above-ground pool? Yes or no?
Yeah.
Right? I mean, that's as simple as you can do. Do you want holes or not?
I don't know.
Just hit the screen. No, that, that may be it, right? That may be it. I, I don't know. That's what we're trying to figure out. On the other extreme is, hey, we're looking at above-ground pool. Here's all the information that we're considering. Here are the regulations that are currently in place. Here's kind of what some people have said. Here's what some other people have said. What are your thoughts? Right? Like, we can give them a book. We can go from anywhere from a one-line, you know, want a pool or not, to all, you know, as, as much detail and information as we feel like.
I think, I think people are gonna say this is a joke. I mean, they can't even water them.
That's right.
Yeah.
If.
Are they, are they, are you kidding?
We have seen decreasing, the more surveys you do and the more the, the length of your survey, the length of your survey and the frequency of your service, the more, the higher, the longer it is. And the more frequently you do, the less you have response. You're gonna be below thirty percent.
And just.
Then ask you, I mean, we did, we have fifty something percent with the, with, with the first survey of the comprehensive plan, and that was fantastic. And, uh, but then other surveys have been thirty percent.
Definitely. I agree with that.
And so really, and, and then there's also here, they, there's also here something to consider. You have a survey on a subject that has been discussed extensively on both sides of the issue on social media and hearings. When you put a survey like that, who is going to respond to the survey? Those who have strong opinions. So that with everything that has gone, that has gone on, on social media, on public hearings, on discussions, then they, this survey is already, they, how neutral is this survey going to be? How it's, I am concerned about the, the, how neutrality. I'm concerned about the service being biased. I, I also feel that way.
So just suppose, just suppose you send out a survey and sixty percent of the respondents want above-ground pools. Now you've learned something. And they were expecting that. You've learned something from a group, a small number more than likely, but then you come back and you have to tell them Linda Kay's story. Yeah. Then, then now, now they learn, oh, you don't, we're not gonna have any more. And now, now you have another task of explaining to this majority that wants these above-ground pools, that why they shouldn't have it and why they can't have. So I'm just not sold on this whole idea personally. Not that y'all are asking my opinion about that, but just I'm not sold that I'm getting all of this information and education and information at this time in the middle of no water makes this body appear to be cognizant of the circumstances of the community's needs. And, you know, y'all are professionals and y'all have been appointed to a really independent commission. And you don't want to bore it over anything, but at the same time, you do have an obligation to the community to take a decision that's in the best interest, at least by my decision.
We, we do, but that's, that's opinion-based and, and our N number is so small. I mean, it's one, two, three, four, five. Um, and, and using a, a, a sample size of five people, um, can, I mean, you, you've probably seen it that, that.
Sure.
That's not a very necessarily representative. I mean, you know, the, the bias of, well, these five people are the ones that have strong feelings about the city because they're the ones that raised their hand and volunteered to come in here. Therefore, they're the ones who, I don't know how to make this up, but but, but, but the reason we wanted to send out a survey was because we felt like this isn't for us to do. It, it, it's not up to us. If, if it were up to us, you know, for short-term goals.
Well, I was, I was here, I was here in your meetings when you made that decision at the time. It was an excellent decision at the time, but in the meantime,
Yeah.
there's been a lot of changes in the circumstances of the community and a lot of changes as were around this, this issue that's been all over the newspapers and, and all over social media. And there's been, you know, a great effort to take a, a, a very small number of people who have wanted something to happen. And it's been magnified. And yet the other side of the story has not been able, or has not chosen to publicize the opinion. But I still believe that everyone of you officials know and, or have learned and are learning how important this water issue is. And we can't, that's the elephant in the room. That has occurred over the, what, yesterday or the day before? The hottest day in the recording of the world, the history of the world, the hottest day. I mean, think about it. This is a changed circumstance. So if you were not to pursue the survey at the moment, if you were not to do that and just had a moratorium on the issue based on the drought and the circumstances that have changed since your first meeting, it'd be very reasonable. I think.
And I, and I just have one more comment. I'm a psychotherapist and I'm taught parenting, et cetera. So sometimes we have to be the parents. Um, and, and so I try to raise my children and I have them, I have them, I try to raise them helpfully and, and teaching them things. And so I'm fixing their dinner. It's a nice healthy dinner. And all three of them come in and say, we want cake now, mommy. And they have a little tip candle. I'm not gonna let them have cake right before dinner because that's in their best interest and that's the best thing to do. They get mad at me. They'll tell me they hate me. But I have to make the decision, what is the best now and in the long run, kind of precedent might I say. And what is my job and responsibility? I'm in a responsible position and I have to say no, you couldn't sometimes be around something. And, but I have to work with what that impact is gonna be on others, not just the people that are in the room and, and who are responding and speaking that night about something that's on the agenda. So I would just challenge you as another person in position of authority and, and management and oversight to look at the big picture and know that it's the squeaky wheel that gets the grease. And sometimes that squeaky wheel is a, a defect and it's not a good wheel, you know? It's not what you need to be listening to. So your duty and responsibility is to serve the people now and in the future. So it's, it's a lot to think about. It's a big responsibility, but, uh, I don't think that if we're in these elected positions, that it's a good idea to also be in a popularity contest. And if we let that rule us sometimes, then, then bad things happen. So I just want to share that with you to really think about. Um, you get a thirty percent response and sixty percent say, yeah, I wanna have a pool. That's not a very good percentage overall. You really don't know what people think. You're not getting a good return.
That, 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 I'm sorry, yeah, I heard you.
No, I was, um, just going to bring it back.
Bring it back, bring it back over here. Yeah, hang on. I think what, that, those are all valid ones. They are, they're all valid ones. Um, I, I would like to believe that um, we are dealing with a large group of adults that are gonna be responding to the survey. And certainly, you received our survey. You would be like, hey, no, I'm not in favor of pools. Here's why. And you write an essay about why. Um, which, which I, I, I found you here, but I'm, I'm glad that you came this evening. And had you not come this evening, I, I wouldn't have received that. So, so that was actually helpful for me to hear, right? And you, you answered one of my questions by giving me this that I had for a while. So I, I, I appreciate that. Um, I, I, I would like to believe that the other people out there are just like you and they are mindful people and they are, I mean, maybe they're not, I don't know, but, but, but that's not really for me to be like, well, we in this group know what we're doing. We're the adults. Those people out there are, you know, the children. So we're the deciding one, is, is my.
I, I, I would just tell you ignorance prevails.
Ignorance prevails.
Ignorance prevails. So that's what we got there.
So. Go ahead. I was gonna say, I think you had a, a very elegant solu- solution and recommendation that was made by Commissioner Robinson uh, uh, thirty minutes ago. I don't know if it was in a form of a motion. I thought it was.
No.
But, but I think that that was.
That was good.
She is not, and I, I think from, from my perspective, it was not just, I, I mean the word elegant, reasonable in that manner, pollution that she's not saying, no, and I don't wanna speak for you, but I think, I think, and I think that was a very elegant, reasonable solution.
It.
Why is that considered my question?
It, maybe. So it, it's, it's up to us. We're, we're getting opinions from, from other people, which, which, which is great. Um, but, but we're the body that decides what we do with this. We, we, we have to do something. Let's, let's do something, you know, our tasking is to, um, figure out, uh, our, our draft citizen survey. So that either means let's kind of refine the saying and be like, yeah, let's vote on this mabadamba and send it out. Or it could just indeed remain, you know what, this just doesn't feel right. The, the sun, the heat, the weather, the feedback we're getting, I don't even think we should send this out right now. Okay, great. We, we can do that too. Um, but, but we need to do something. So, so we're, we're still kind of discussing and if other people up here have stuff to say, then, then, then we'll say it. Otherwise, kind of be formulating in your minds what your opinion is and, and how you personally would like this, this to go. Um, and then, and then I'm going, so I'm gonna make a motion and we're gonna take it from there.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right, go.
I would make a motion that we, um, present to city council that we, due to the drought and everything that's going on, that we and I'm not saying this probably how it needs to be written, Suzanne, but that we table the discussion and the survey.
Okay. So, so take, take just a second and take your pen and your paper because you are making a motion.
Right.
And she's gonna write down exactly what you said. So, so take just a second to, to think of the word and be, my motion is that I want to. And while you're writing that, Chris.
I may add, um, the motion to table is very specific and it puts it right in front of us right here and that anyone of you pulled it back out.
Yeah.
So the motion to postpone, but you're making a recommendation.
I'll let you know.
To council to post, um, motion to postpone.
Okay. It's not tabled. With a definitive date.
Or, or.
That.
Or.
Well, the, the, the table, my understanding, and Kevin and Chris can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but, but if we as a body table something, it, it is coming up on our next agenda.
Next.
Right, you know, I'm, I'm.
Well, there's different forms of table in units. No, I'm sorry, I'm making it up though. You're right. Table is, it's putting here, it automatically shows up the diary list.
That's right.
On the next agenda.
It will show up at the next meeting. If you postpone, you can specify postpone until.
Yeah. Um, but, um, Tim, or what I, what I want you to contemplate is what, what exactly are we postponing, right? Are, are we, so our, our agenda item is to take first reaction on, uh, creating a citizen survey. Are we postponing creating a citizen survey? And if so, when, when are we gonna pick this back up again? Or are we postponing the whole molly, hey man, above-ground pools? P and D wants to postpone the whole thing. We don't, we're not gonna do a survey. We're not gonna do anything.
Postpone the survey.
Okay. So then you don't need to make.
Then we're not sending it to our council. You're, you're postponing it amongst yourselves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. So here's a question. While she's writing, here's a question. All right. So we postpone this, but do we, could we make a recommendation to council from us on this issue that says this is not a good time? Uh, we recommend that you do not take action. Uh, we recommend that you do not take action on above ground pools in such time.
Correct. And that would be and that would be your recommendation.
Yes.
And they will not come back to you again until council brought it back to you. Because basically, once you make the recommendation, it's out of this committee and it is in council's hands. So your recommendation recommendation would be, don't do above ground pools until the the water restriction or whatever, and you can put a number on there if you want. Uh, then that would be the recommendation.
Yeah, okay.
But if you were going to do that, there would really need to be a need to postpone. That that would kind of.
Yeah, that would, you have all of this. So that that's where I was going with my thought process, but. Just give me a minute. I want to make sure I've got it right.
Make it sound.
Whoever is in writing this is voting.
Point of recommendation or clarification is this the first, this is the main location?
Yes.
On the title?
Nothing has been done yet.
Nothing's been done yet. We're both, we're both writing.
Right, I'm just writing the same.
No, I'm not writing the same thing. I'm writing something different.
So she's contemplating in her mind making, having us make a recommendation to city council that nothing happens with pools until something else happens. We get some rain and then and then and then it's no longer our basis. She's recommending to city council, hey, you guys come back to us with this at some point in the future or don't.
Right, I'm sending.
Right, so we want to write our sign in your court.
Right, if you if you postpone working on our draft uh citizen survey, then what you're saying is, yeah, we're we're still gonna do this. We're just not gonna do it right now. We as a body will take this back up again at some point in the future when we feel it's a good time to do it.
And you're still gonna talk about.
Right.
This idea, whereas you make the recommendation to council.
Point of origin of this is.
Her motion, she's gonna get it. She needs to make her motion.
You have a motion on the floor that you have to.
Yeah, motion on the floor.
For seconds, that's what we're doing. And then another motion. He did make.
He made a motion.
He did make a motion. I just have not written it.
Okay, but if you made a motion, and I'm sorry, but so you don't get in trouble. You 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 made a motion, you either have to have a second on that motion and vote on it, or she has to withdraw the motion.
Well, her motion isn't.
It was incomplete when she started it.
And I and I didn't restate it yet. So so I said, hold on a second, write it down first. So if if there wasn't intended to be.
Wasn't wasn't restated, but sounding on the motion.
Okay.
She's almost getting confused. She's working on her.
I'm working.
Can you read my scribble?
I don't know.
Who's the doctor here? Welcome to get rid of Robbie.
So. Okay, all right. What do we want to do? Are you ready?
You got you. I'm I I'm just driving this train.
All right.
You can vote, I'll present an idea and then vote for vote.
Okay, I'm just gonna go ahead and go straight to the motion.
Yours or?
Lydia, I think Lydia.
She has a main one yet.
Yeah, I'm gonna I'm gonna go ahead and make this motion.
So this is the main motion.
This is the main vote. All right, Tamara, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, I move that we send the recommendation to council to postpone any action on above ground pool ordinance changes until such time as we reach level one water restrictions.
Can I have all of it?
Yes, you may. It's handwritten.
Thank you. I'm good with that. You gonna go back?
Does that mean you second?
I second.
Okay, so uh the motion has been made that this governing body is going to. Thank you. Uh, that we and we uh that we send the recommendation to council to postpone any action on above ground pool ordinance changes until the time that we reach a level one water restriction.
What about in ground? Shouldn't that be the same?
Well, I know, but we're only dealing with above ground. That's what came to us.
Right.
Yeah. So council will have to take care of that.
So the motion has been made, the motion has been accepted. I have I have spelled it out again. There you go. Time to vote.
All right, Vice Chair Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Songay?
Aye.
Commissioner Bledsoe?
Aye.
Chair Dunneport?
Aye.
Yeah. It was case. Yes.
Uh, okay, very good.
Yes. So that took care of all.
That took care of number three, which was really number two. And now we're gonna get a number two, which is really number. We'll send taking appropriate actions before one budget impacting items and events the city council for consideration is possible included in twenty twenty four. Thank you, Linda.
My life's like, and I'm sorry if I was disruptive and interrupting.
No, we don't normally do what we did, but I think it was a good thing.
And actually, not supposed to, but I do it all the time with my audience because I feel it's important to get information before you make a decision. Sometimes it's in the audience and very much. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm gonna get your number from there.
Okay, I gave her two cards.
Okay.
Linda, thank you.
All right.
So um it's it's labeled as item number two, and that's the one we're addressing now. Uh, and the there there is a city budget. Um, and and the question at hand is, does P and D need any, do we need to make any requests for for anything? Like, is there any special P and Z stuff that we know of in advance that's gonna require some money so we can make that recommendation to city council that they include that in the budget? And and the the, I think the best people to answer that would be either people who are in the know and have experience doing this before, or people who have been on P and Z years previous and been like, oh, yeah, well, we have a giant pizza party every September, so we're gonna be.
Yeah, we don't count that. But I thought that the uh vice chair should get a new car, but that's okay. Oh, no, what I was, what I was thinking in in terms of, like, when we have these um um meetings, uh public hearings and having to send out notices that that cost the city.
Do we need a budget for that? Like, is that?
I have increased the budget line for the advertisements or the public notices.
Okay.
Um, so yes, it is included.
And so instead of sending out to the confirmations, though, is that is that?
Um, yeah, I'll have to look on exactly, but I have added more money just not only for you, but also for council for that type of thing, because that's kind of the way that they're heading.
In your experience with P and Zs, is are there other big items that we may not know about that?
No.
Yeah.
That's the main ones.
That's the only one.
Who's a servant of the survey.
Right.
Yeah, and that's what I asked him.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, she's right.
Okay.
Yeah, really, that's the that's the biggest just for um that, you know, just survey, because because when you do public hearings as well, you know, they're required.
Yeah.
And so we increase the the budget for that in case I think more ordinance will ordinances will be coming to you that probably will be becoming more P and Z first just because of the the legal requirements. And so, yeah, all of that has been increased.
Okay, so I guess we don't need.
Well, we'll need to, we'll need to cross that off our list. We're we're discussing it, so we'll need to take appropriate action. And that action should be that we don't need anything in addition to our city manager's authority. That comes in board.
So I make a motion that has said, no, we don't need anything.
You don't either.
You don't, okay. Then you're good.
We just have to say.
All right, so we're good.
All right, yeah, you're good. I mean, we'll drop that one off our list. Um, item number four, biannual review of the city's comprehensive plans um and be prepared to make recommendations to the city council as the necessary. Um, so again, I I think everyone here has heard kind of where that originated. It is within our ordinances that P and Z shall at least every two years, go back and look at the comprehensive plan. Um, with, I I believe, and that's in my interpretation now, the intent of that is, hey, we don't want to spend all this time and money coming up with a comprehensive plan, a thirty year plan, and then it just collects back somewhere. Like, we did that for a reason. Let's use it. And we're the ones who are supposed to go back and be like, oh, yeah, that's right. We need to talk about doing this by this date. That's not happening. Let's make a recommendation. Let's 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 light a fire. City council will be like, hey, man, comprehensive plan. So.
Is there like a uh like dates?
Well.
Written out where we know.
October two, twenty twenty four right now.
October twenty two, twenty twenty four.
Yeah.
So the the reason this got on our agenda, though, was because it was brought to my attention that this was P and D's responsibility. And at some point, not certainly right now, but at some point, we needed to do it. Um.
It's up here.
Over.
Yeah.
Um. More more unofficially, I would I would say, but but Lydia was very involved in um in drafting a comprehensive plan. And when this body took up short term rentals, um we very much looked and reviewed that plan to see if that was in line with what was within our comprehensive plan.
Right.
So in my mind, we've kind of done a review. It wasn't maybe a formal down line by line review, which I don't suggest we do as a body. I think we should decide how we want to accomplish that review.
Okay, so I have an idea for that.
Great.
Okay, what I would like to suggest is we have like a working session of the P and Z members. We'll sit down with it. Y'all can ask me questions. I will go through the entire document with us, you know, and thought processes and things like that, because it's got copious notes from when we were doing it. And then after we've done that, then we can bring it up into our meeting and everybody will be informed. Is that? What do you all think?
Yeah, I mean, is it is the question biannual?
Biannual.
Biannual, every two years.
Right.
Yeah, so then the next question is, when do you think would be an ideal time to do that?
I would like to think that early in twenty twenty four, so like March of twenty twenty four.
Okay.
And then we can, we can look at it. That way, everybody's got, you know, a good chance to go through the whole thing. You know, and look at all of the objectives. Have we met objectives? Are we still working on them? You know, that sort of thing. And then after we've reviewed it, you know, if we have things to send to city council for concerns, I think that would be a good time to do it. That was like March of twenty twenty four.
And you're suggesting in March of twenty twenty four, we have a P and Z working report, we should have just kind of completely discuss that review every.
Yep, that sounds like a good plan because that thing, that puppy's long.
So eighty four, ninety pages.
It is. Hold on, I have a copy right here. Yeah, it is seventy six pages long.
There's a lot of pictures.
Yeah.
But it's it's extensive. And I think we will sit down with working copies and just go through it because there is a lot of really good information that came from all of the, you know, surveys that were done, that big meeting over at the VFW where we had, you know, and everything. Yeah, uh there is a lot of thought process that went into that that was just amazing. And you know, we came down with a lot of goals and objectives and things like that that, you know, we just need to review and make sure we're following.
So do I need to make a motion?
Hold on, hold on, one second.
I was gonna ask Kevin a question. Has the census data come out yet? Because I know at the time that the compound was created, that wasn't there yet. So wasn't being able to.
Yeah.
It hasn't come out yet.
Okay.
You got another couple years for that.
Yeah.
Do we, do they have a goal?
No, they don't.
Okay.
But it's it's federal bill.
Yeah. Kidding.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty forty.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Instead of bringing a meeting on March sixth. That's part of your motion. I mean, if you want to put it in March, then.
Oh, yeah. Do you want to do it as our regular meeting, the working meeting, or do you want to hold off and put it after the working meeting? Just in case. I I don't have a.
It could take a while, but.
It could take a while.
Yeah, I think maybe we should do it separate.
Well, I know we need to do it separate.
But I mean, not after the regular meeting.
Yeah, no. Um, the thing is, is should we take a regular meeting day to do it or schedule a special day?
I'm a better less special day.
Okay, that's what we.
Be going.
Special date.
Yeah. Not during spring break.
February.
No, nobody goes anywhere in February. Let's do it. Yeah, let's back it up to February.
And then that way we have a regular meeting after that.
It's been Valentine's Day again.
Oh.
Have a lovely. No, sorry.
Someone bring heart cookies.
That's not out of the realm.
Okay, any more discussion on? On that?
Nonsense.
Yeah. Makes those people to know the shape of hearts, right?
And I was kidding, uh, February fourteenth, but that is the next Wednesday after that.
No, why?
Okay. Okay.
You have been on bringing chocolates.
Well, we'll do it the week after and we'll get them all on sale.
I'm gonna hurry. They're the chocolates for for asking the former chair to put your comprehensive plan because you're lucky.
Okay, so my motion is that P and Z hold a special uh working session on February twenty first of twenty twenty four to go through the uh comprehensive plan.
Your biannual review of city comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one.
Yep.
To perform the biannual review. Okay, got it.
Put that on my calendar right now before I forget it.
You want to include the rest of the motion?
Yeah.
So um planning is having hold a special work session on February ten first twenty four. She performed a biannual review of the city, planned the plan and be prepared to make recommendations to the city council if necessary or if.
If necessary.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because that way, if we don't have any, then we don't have to do anything, but if we do.
Okay, very good. Any? Well, you mentioned.
I made the motion. We gotta have a second.
Okay, great. Any further discussion on that motion? No, okay, so you can vote on that.
Commissioner Robertson? Yes, Commissioner Songay?
Aye.
Commissioner Bledsoe?
Aye.
Chair Dunneport?
Aye.
Vice Chair John?
Aye.
We're we're like all insane. We're all. Um, okay, that concludes the regular agenda items. Are there any announcements?
It's hot out.
It's hot out.
Yeah.
The motion.
How are you going to state this? At a conjunction or what is it?
Yes.
It is hot or it's hot?
It was just my. A motion to adjourn the Tuesday meeting?
I submit.
Six fifty two.
And you know, there's.
I'm sorry.
There's nothing that keeps you off reading.